Thank you for the question.
Apparently you're injured now.
Yeah, while you're mentioning that, we're just about finishing up the internal road infrastructure on C Court, and we have one other pipe, right, Chris, to put in?
The new catch basin.
The new catch basin on C Court. And then once we're done with that, then we can, we'll start making arrangements and get on a schedule for the payment. We'll keep it posted as I close. Anyone else, any comments, questions? All right, we'll jump into our discussions. So for the board, I think it was Michael at our last meeting brought up the suggestion of thirty-minute parking on the Goshen Avenue ninety-four, two oh eight areas. Just so, I guess the parking would move a little faster and people wouldn't be, if there happened to be residents upstairs or potential business owner, that they would be parked down in the street for the eight-hour period of time. And, you know, the trend is for everybody to park their vehicles in the lot behind, you know, the village parking lot, either of course from the pharmacy now or our lot behind businesses. So just for discussion purposes at this moment, any feelings on?
I think thirty minutes is enough.
Your restaurants are good.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if you're going into Amada and you're eating stuff, you're gonna be there at least ninety minutes. If you're going into like F and J, you know, it's not a quick fix, however, you know, two hours would be reasonable.
Yeah, I've been actually, since that was mentioned at our last meeting, I've been trying to pay attention coming up and down ninety-four a lot of times during the day and just watching the traffic and seeing if the cars are moving. And I can't say that there's been anyone that's been kind of permanently parked there for any long period of time.
Well, you know, on ninety-four there, there is, one of the EMTs parks there all day when they launch them.
With the Jeep, yeah, I've seen that, yes.
And then there's somebody else with the Jeep that's been there for several hours right in front by the hook. I mean, another one of the bigger problems is the lot by F and J. Sometimes the kids that work in F and J park out there rather than going in the back and leaving it for customers. So I think the bigger question is though, if we get meters or how would we enforce this and what would be the cost associated with the meters?
Well, that would be the next steps that we would have to partake in figuring out. I think the chief was going to investigate parking meters, the newer ones, okay, so we don't have anybody collecting coins. You throw your debit card in or your credit card and it's for...
The muay bing meters.
I'm sorry?
The muay bing meters.
Right, you download the app and you can stay and you're paying as good time that you're parked there. So we can certainly look at that. Chris, or Brian, do you have any?
I did get some feedback. I just haven't really had a meeting with them, but they're correct. East Main Street in front of the businesses is thirty minutes. The F and J's lot is one hour and behind municipal lot is two hours. So if you're visiting a restaurant, I mean, personally, I don't think thirty minutes is enough time, but that law was a long time ago. So I don't know if we should look at all the parking. Because if you are gonna visit the hook or martelly, maybe martelly shop you might be in within a half an hour, but thirty minutes is pretty short for those businesses, you know, get your nails done, things like that. So I think when we did have this discussion, we talked about over, looking over the entire parking plan for the village. I just don't think we've really touched on it since, but something to look into.
The other thing that might be worthwhile in taking the time, but canvassing the business owners there and get their feedback and if we were to put some kind of parking meters in, you know, what would be their thoughts and ideas?
We have done some enforcement for the vehicles that are parked there for a long time. F and J's lot, we definitely enforce more than any other lot. Municipal lot, it's tricky. We talked about who owns what parking spots, but we do issue a few tickets there when we see cars there. We just ticketed and towed a car there last week for not having plates or insurance on it. So there is enforcement back there, but it's tricky. So if we see a car like during the snow pile, uh, snow season, we see it's snow covered and it's there two days later, it's, it's, it's definitely a problem.
What do you guys feel about doing a survey with the business owners?
I, I have feeling, I'd like Steve.
Well, I mean, know what they might say, but I think we need to hear it so that they're comfortable with it. The last thing I do want to do is, you know, move forward with anything and then have these things show up and they're gonna say, well, how'd this get here, what's going on and no one told me?
No business plates, parking meters.
Could this be a conversation we have to find?
It feels like huge customers.
It should, yeah, that's a good idea. Can I bring it to the comp plan?
She's the planner.
Yeah.
Spoke to my comp there. She deals with this, all the time.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And then we can, once we get some feedback, and then maybe just I can walk the street one day and just, you know, knock on the doors and see, see what their opinions are or give them a little survey.
Didn't we ever have parking meters?
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
Years ago.
I think that's a reason why we don't have them now.
I think, well, I moved in eighty-six and they were here. And they were pretty much on the main drag. After they redid the intersections, that changed everything because there used to be parking where the locksmith is and Woodegrove wants, there used to be parking on that side of the street. And then when they redid the intersection, that went away and they redesigned the F and J parking lot, called it Melotman Square.
I think the trend is not to have meters in the small towns and the general jack customers. I think people don't like that.
Yeah. We can break.
Yeah, but I also think it keeps people mindful of how long they gotta plant it there.
Well, the one thing, we can go back and look at the law, you know, Brian's, you know, telling us what they are, and to be honest with you, I don't recall ever seeing signs.
There is, there's one sign on East Main Street, down the street from the hook, it's thirty minutes. It's not even high, it's low. All the other ones, I don't know, they kind of just went away.
Yeah, they went away.
And F and J's is really, like, going back to what I said before, F and J's is really the only lot because it's so small that we do get complaints about, usually from F and J's or something, that it's tenants parking there. So, because that's so small, the, the one hour kind of works there, but if you are having a meal, maybe it should be adjusted. But I think the, the planner, that's a great idea to have a look at the whole parking.
Can you make a note of that and talk to her for the next meeting?
Those are things that does need to be uniform, every lot needs to have the same.
I can just say also, like I mentioned last time, from the whole state, those three spots there, there's residents, there's people that park there. I saw it today, they were there for, there's no signs, so there's nothing wrong with them parking there. But those three spots are great for, you know, going to pick up pizza or doing something in the village where you just need to run in and run out, even if it's, you know, getting a haircut, whatever it is.
Sure.
So those three spots there as well, but they are parked there for, like I said, there's definitely wrong with it today.
Yeah. Yes, I, I park there quite a bit too when I run into the, to the print shop. All right, so why don't we take a look at the local law and, you know, refresh ourselves with all of that and then we can mention it to the comp plan committee and see if we get some feedback from them. And I just think an informal knocking on the door with the local business people feel about it, I think, you know, really at the end of the day.
Yeah, no. Yeah, no, that sounds good.
Okay. And when is the next comp plan meeting, June what?
July.
I'm sorry, July?
It's the third Thursday.
Third Thursday, okay, good, so we got time. Cool, okay. Anything else on that? Progress. North Street and ninety-four Village Municipal Parking Lot, this came up also at the last meeting of a kind of a don't block the intersection with the painting and the stripes that are in a lot of the roads that you see today. I sent an email out to our legislators and I'm waiting because seeing a state road, we're gonna need to get their feedback. And even if it comes down back to the parking, if we want signs, all of that will need to be approved by D O T. So, hate to say, it might be a little bit of a lengthy process. So we'll keep you updated as any correspondence comes back on that. Let's see, also CHIPS amount, that came up at our last meeting, wanting to know our annual funding for CHIPS, which is basically a highway improvement program. Our annual is eighty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents currently. So that's what we receive on an annual basis. Another project that's coming up through the Department of Health is lead pipe inventory. So the state is basically giving us until in all of New York, up until October sixteen of twenty twenty-four, to inventory all of our water lines that are coming from the street that enter into a home or business and determining if it's lead, copper, galvanized, and from that information, that once it's compiled, there'll be a period of time that all of the lead and galvanized type piping would need to be replaced. So we're planning on sending out a letter to all the residents and there'll be kind of instructions in there if you want to try to do this yourself. In other words, you know where your meter is, if it's clean and you can see that it's copper, there's a process, we're just gonna ask you to take a picture of it and then you email it to us so we can document it versus having somebody come to every home in the village or business and try to do this on our, kind of on our own. So we're kind of looking at a team, team approach with this, between residents and businesses. We feel that there's, most developments are new enough that a lot of it's already gonna be copper. We have some concerns or just thoughts about our downtown area, areas maybe South Street, North Street, some of the older developments or older streets.
What year was it switched from lead to not lead?
It was never, I don't believe that there was ever a statue created that says you can't use it anymore. It was phased out over time and the phase out probably started in the nineteen eighties. So like my house, which was built in eighteen-something, pretty good chance that that's gonna be one of the, the Newcastle development, which was built in the eighties and nineties, isn't gonna be an issue. The condos are probably not gonna be an issue. The sad part is that this falls on our expense. The government wants us to do it, but we have to pay for it.
Have we know whether it's lead coming from the street to our home?
You'll see where it comes in to your house.
Where the water, where the water comes into your home where the meter is, the pipe that's either coming through the floor or coming through the wall, that pipe potentially is gonna be copper, more than likely. If it's harness, there's a, you can take a coin and you can rub it or try to clean it so you can actually see if it's copper, shiny, or if it's lead, it's usually a dollar color. But in this letter that you'll get, we'll explain, you know, the process and just looking at it and just testing it. Okay? So actually, your street is gonna be probably between Emerson and C Court, the first two to get done specifically because, again, we feel confident in Douglas Court, we feel confident that the pipes in the ground to your homes are copper, but we wanna make absolutely sure because we don't want to, we wanna do the survey before we pay it, really what it comes down to. So you'll be the first on the block to get it done. And then we report all this information and then from there compile, say, the Senate of the state and then wait for the next step. Next item is just an update or just an FYI for the audience and residents that our health insurance plan that we currently have is a very good plan. Our coverage is really good, but we're also looking at different alternatives for other pricing. Obviously, we were gonna imagine we want the same healthcare coverage, but we're looking at other plans to see if there's any potential cost saves, but again, without jeopardizing our healthcare requirements. We'll keep you updated on that. The next item is reviewing water and sewer facility charges. So as you know, last year, the water and sewer rates went up. But after talking to the company who did the survey or basically did the analysis to come up with the numbers, I'm not a hundred percent sure that they either had the right information. So what we're gonna do is rerun these numbers because we're taking information out of our water and billing system besides looking at some county records because we wanna make sure we actually have the right number of accounts between businesses and homes. And then we're gonna rerun those numbers to make sure that they're equivalent to what we need to basically maintain the water department and the sewer department.
And pay the bill.
Right, and the other big one is the facilities charge that we're currently pay thirty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents, and that money is to go towards sewer plant expansion and the cost of paying back those bonds that have been, the money that we borrowed. We're rerunning that number as well because we wanna ensure that that number, total number of the facilities charge, four times a year, times the amount of homes and businesses, is enough to pay the bond for sewer plant, which is in the neighborhood right now of about four hundred and eleven thousand dollars a year. So the facility charge is basically to cover that payment and that's where our goal is and that's, if we're shy, potentially after, you know, what we see and what we talk about, that we, you know, potentially could see an increase in the facilities charge only if it's long and short. So we'll keep you abreast of that as well. Any other comments from the board?
No, just so the public needs to understand, water and sewer, even though you get one bill, is for three very distinct funds and they're not supposed to be commingled with each other, you're not supposed to borrow from Peter to pay Paul. So the money that goes for the facility use is strictly to pay off that bond. It does not go for anything else. The sewer fund literally keeps the building running. It seems like every time we turn around, there's some part that's broken that needs to be replaced. And the water fund replaces meters when it's our responsibility as well as maintaining our wells and the chemicals that go into them so we can all have safe drinking water.
Thank you. Next is TD Bank. So we have all our checking accounts in TD Bank. They, they called the other day and said, we've been doing a very good job managing our accounts and paying our bills and not bouncing any checks. So with that, they're now giving us interest on our money, dollar to dollar. So that's a, that's a good sign, really, at the end of the day. So we'll, you know, we'll keep you abreast of those types of things, but that was, that was a nice thing to see. I did actually request also to see over the last number of years, the amount of money of bounced checks that we've had incurred. It was a grace period in there where they said they were not gonna be charging us the fees for returned checks, but apparently they were more than what they found to be suitable and so they decided to continue the practice of giving us the fees and paying those fees back. So we'll give you more information as that comes available. Any questions, comments on anything so far? Next is help desk workflow management. Susan has been working on looking and reviewing several different types of help desk work order type systems because one of the things we're, we're finding out is that there's so much activity between in-house, between departments, between the residents and trying to take care of the requests that we need a very simple, cost-effective, web-based product that we can hand, take a, take basically a work order, similar to the incident form that's online right now. But what happens with this is that it can be updated. If there's updates, it gets automatically emailed back to the resident. So they're constantly in the loop of what, you know, what's going on with the particular issue. So with that, Susan, if there's anything else you wanna add with this particular plan?
The whole purpose of it is, we want the residents to be able to come in or go online and say, I got a problem, which is fine, and they're coming in, but it's the tracking of it. So what department does it go to? Does it go to the building inspector? Does it go to the water department? Does it go to the DPW? And then once it's there, it's, you know, somebody's gotta follow up on it. And this puts all of that in one place and it gives us the ability to see who's got it, who's doing it, you know, we can run a report, see what's outstanding. That's really what it is. Some of these programs can run you, literally one toll to make, you take as much as fifteen thousand dollars just to get us set up. This particular company was nice and cheap at just a hundred bucks a month. So, but I do have two or three others I wanna look at to make sure, you know, we get something that's gonna do what we want it to do at the most economical cost for us.
And it was a really, really simple system to use, very easy to run reports, flex things, we can set days and parameters to it, priorities to different issues. So I think it'll be a real helpful tool, not only for the board, but for the department managers to be able, you know, manage their workflow on a daily basis better than what we're currently, what we're currently dealing with. So there'll be more to come on that as we review the next couple of systems and then we can check into pricing and so forth and then make a decision. Any questions on any of that? Next is an update just regarding the fireworks display this Friday. The event starts at six o'clock, there'll be vendors and live band. If by chance there's rain, it will be on Saturday, July eighth. Just read this, this is just kind of talking about the roads. So note that Avorn Boulevard will be closed by three P M. between Revere and Decker Drive. And that, that's pretty much where all our vendors are gonna be set up. To ease the traffic up on Revere, that there'll be no parking on the east side of Revere after twelve P M. on Friday. Because if there is an emergency, if there's parking on both sides, it's very difficult to get any type of emergency vehicle up there or through that roadway. So the following roads, roads will be closed and this is at the intersections of Avorn Boulevard and Newcastle Drive and Decker Drive and Capitol Drive. And as a norm, there's no parking on Route ninety-four from Avorn Boulevard to Bernadette Way. That'll be restricted and there's fencing already up and we just urge everybody, you know, I think it's gonna be more people coming from different areas that are seeing it and wanna pull over, but with the way the new road has been developed, the sides are very steep and it's not an area where you could just drive off and watch fireworks. So just wanted to mention that. Don has already, we have that up on the website, Facebook, and we'll be making an announcement tomorrow over C T Y. So everybody has that. Does the board have anything else that they would like to bring up at this time?
One thing, Mayor, with respect to time limits on parking, I would refer the board to Village Code Section one six two dash four four, which sets for thirty-minute parking for certain streets.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, just a case of correspondence that we received from New York State Conference of Mayors for the full training. That'll be taking place September eighteen through the twenty-second and the conference will be at Lake Classic. So yes, this is an opportunity for trustees, boards to go up and there'll be attendants and so forth that are online. So anyone who's interested, I really, really recommend you go into this because it will be a very big eye-opener. You'll be with your peers, great networking, finding out other people are doing things that we're doing, everybody finding, we all pretty much have the same issues. There's usually one or two large meetings with leadership from New York State and I really do recommend it. So whatever time you can afford to go and, you know, sign yourselves up, we'll work through Christine and of course, obviously, this is in Lake Classic, there's hotel reservations and all, all of that good stuff. Okay?
You don't have to do the entire...
No. Yeah, and I believe now they're doing, they used to do them Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Now they're doing, I believe, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So everybody's out of there. And usually the Friday is, is really just a kind of winding down. They usually, you can meet with your senator or legislator person, more networking with the New York State folks. But yeah, whatever, whatever time you could put in, great.
The eighteen is actually a Monday.
Oh, this is a Monday, okay. Yeah, the last one they had was Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Okay, good, so it's a week. Okay. Next is, next will be a resolution to schedule a public hearing for Monday, July seventeenth at seven oh five P M. regarding the property maintenance violations on the property located at nine Bernadette Way and to authorize the building inspector to issue such notice hearing to the owner and/or property. Is that in motion, please? Has a second? Any questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, who's second did it?
Brian's second.
He's getting there with him second.
Next is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the inter-municipal agreement between the Village of Washingtonville and the town of Blooming Grove for essential garage vehicle repairs and preventive maintenance services. Is that motion? Steve on motion, second?
Second.
Second, Susan. Questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is resolution to adopt Millennium Strategies for Grant Break Services from July fifth, twenty twenty-three through July fourth, twenty twenty-four and the cost of forty dollars per month. Consulting fees are at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for project support. Is that motion, please? Second. Any questions, comments?
I just want to comment so the audience knows what this is. This is a company that runs a portal that you can search for grants because there are literally grants for everything, AKA free money, and it will help us to locate them with greater ease and it'll give us assistance filling it out. New York State alone released something like four billion dollars worth of grants on July first. We were too late to qualify for them, but they are expected to do the same next year. So we wanna be able to, you know, jump on that bandwagon again and get some of that money for us.
I know, Paul, that sounds like a lot of money a month, but we can't afford enough to do this.
The, the whole idea, and I don't know if anybody's ever looked at grants or tried to write a grant or do the research to do all of the above, it is painstaking and a full-time job plus. So that's where the one fifty comes in for basically paying them to do the grant. And like Susan was indicating, the portal is really great because it's broken out in different categories. So if you're looking for something on playgrounds, you can go to the playground icon and you can bring up grants, private grants, state grants, government grants, you name the grant, it's out there. And you can, and you can either apply for it yourself or in certain situations if they're complicated and just very tiny consuming, they'll, they'll give you a quote, give you the hours. They'll never, they don't pay you if they go over hours, though, it's a fixed fee. And the first thing we're going after is for the comprehensive plan between first company that was here, that was about fifty thousand dollars, plus the eighty-five or eighty-six that we'll be doing with this, with the new planner. We're gonna, you know, combine that money and go after that grant money for, for that so it's reimbursed back to the village. And it'll be good because that money's been already spent and we'll be able to just approve, you know, with the checks and so forth, that the money was spent on that and we should be able to get to grants.
And we already know for that planner, there is a fifty percent matching grant that is out there.
Right.
It just has to be applied for.
Yeah, and the other, next one that we've talked about as well is for a well... And the other, next one that we've talked about as well is for wells, for the High View, you know, that complex of the newer homes for seventy-one, seventy-three homes. There's two wells that are out there, but they're undeveloped. And what we need to do is do the engineering this coming year, and then the grants will be available, will apply, this will apply in twenty-four. The grant money is awarded in November of twenty-four. And then we'd be able to hopefully win some of that money. And then we could use that in twenty twenty-five to actually develop these wells. Any questions from the board? Next is a resolution to appoint chairpersons and set the terms for the planning board, architectural review board, code of ethics board, and just to say, and for the Z B A, it would be just to, they have to select their own chairperson, but we will be setting the terms for the, for the Z B A. And with that, I'll turn it over to Donna, she's been doing a hundred and ten percent of all that work.
Okay, and we'll start with the planning board. We have decided as a board to appoint Nancy Commerford as the chairperson for the planning board. And now we'll go through the terms, starting with Shereen Questa. Her term will expire on four, seven, twenty twenty-four. Next, Jacqueline Davis, her term will expire on four, seven, twenty twenty-five. Term three, William Jones, his term will expire on four, six, twenty twenty-six. Eddie Serezio, term four, his term will expire on four, five, of twenty-seven. And term five is Nancy Commerford, her term will expire on four, three, of twenty twenty-eight. So those are five-year terms. We had to press the reset button because things got jumbled and mixed up along the way. Terms are all supposed to expire in the same month. So these are now staggered, starting with one year going through five. So we are able to reappoint once the term expires. But at least they'll be on track. Five-year terms are all expiring in the same month, but in different years, so we're not losing five board members at once, just so we have an understanding. Next is for the, the Z B A. So currently, we only have three Z B A members. If you're anyone interested, there are two vacant spots. So term one and term two, we are leaving vacant right now. One of those will expire in, term one will expire in twenty twenty-four, whoever fills it. For term two, vacant spot, that will expire in April seventh of twenty twenty-five. Term three is Rick Budikowski. His term will expire four, seven, of twenty twenty-five. Term four is Patrice Gessner, that will expire four, six, of twenty-six. And term five is Bill Carroll, that term will expire four, six, of twenty-six. Also, the Z B A. Currently, under our Village Code, it's a three-year appointment. We are going to change that, so all the boards will, will have the same procedures. So Planning Exode will at least align. So in order to do that, we have to have a public hearing in order to change that as per the local village law, rather than the Village Code. They are in conflict. So currently, we have to keep it as is until that public hearing takes place. And then we will change the dates on the terms, or the length of the term. Also, for that Z B A, we have chosen Rick Budikowski as chairman for that board.
But they elect their own chair.
And that's the other piece. So as per our Village Code, that board has to nominate and elect their chair. So Rick has already been on that board. That was discussed amongst the board, but they will, they actually have a meeting tomorrow night, and they will make that decision by electing and nominating. We can't make that appointment. Next is the Architectural Review Board. We have appointed Ted Baloa as chairperson. Term one is Jeffrey Wado, and his term will expire on four, seven, of twenty-four. Term two is Stephen Tolly, his term will expire on four, seven, of twenty-five. Term three is Ann Mamalidi, her term will expire four, seven, of twenty-five. Term four is Ted Loa, and his term will expire on four, five, of twenty-six. We do have, as of yesterday, a vacancy for that one.
That's been posted, correct?
It has been posted. Next board is the Ethics Board. We are appointing Pat Mitchell, thank you, Pat, as chairman of that board. Term one is Julie Zara, who will expire four, seven, of twenty-four. Term two is Jackie Budikowski, that term expires four, seven, of twenty-five. Term three is Jamie White, that expires four, seven, of twenty-five. Term four is Ken Schwartz, term expires four, five, of twenty-six. And term five is Pat Mitchell, expiring four, five, of twenty-six. Three-year terms on that board. And again, once that term is up, we can reappoint. When we reappoint, that will then go to three years.
Good.
Any questions?
Do we need a motion just to accept the latest present, presentation?
Well, we just need to vote, because we had the second, this was the comment.
Oh, okay.
We just need to vote. If anyone, I don't know if you guys have any question?
Okay, so, um, on the zoning board, I expressed earlier, there are only, there are currently only three members. So term one and term two are vacant. Once those terms are filled, those people will get the, the one and the two-year term. So because there are only three members, we started with a, well, not a two-year term.
Right.
Right.
That's fine. Anybody have any questions on any of the terms in the?
Do we have a date for when we're going to do a public hearing yet to amend our laws to make this stuff all even?
I'm, we're still corresponding about, about it, so.
Because I think we should straighten that up as quickly as possible.
I understand it's for next month. Brian mentioned that, I don't know what date yet.
Okay. He, he didn't mention that to me, but I'd be trust that Brian said that.
All right, thank you. All right, so there's no other questions, comments on?
I, I would note that just for, just for completion's sake, that when you make the motion, I would incorporate in the terms of the motion, the content of the spreadsheet that you were reading off of.
Meaning that we are making a motion to?
You are making a motion to set forth the, the terms pursuant to the spreadsheet that Brian provided you and that you were reading off of.
It's presented as a resolution.
It should be resolution.
So we did the resolution to appoint chairpersons as described in the worksheet read by trustee Jacque Russo. And we set the terms for planning, A R B, and code of ethics. And Z B A. Is that okay?
It just is, for completion's sake, I would just, in the resolution, note that you're adopting the spreadsheet.
Would you like to just make the resolution?
I'm happy to draft the resolution.
I'd be happy for you to happy, make us all happy. You can draft that resolution.
Absolutely.
And who did the motion and seconded it?
We had, we had a, a motion, we had it seconded, and now we just came down to the vote.
Uh, who made the motion, who seconded it?
What we got?
I don't think we have.
No, you didn't, you just started to read the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
So you need to make a motion and second it.
All right, so we need a, a motion to adopt.
I will make that motion to adopt.
Can we have a second from Steve? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. Next is a resolution to apply for an Orange County grant up to four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Intent of this grant is to purchase a traffic warning signal at Taff School. I had received a call from our legislator, Kathy Stiganga, that there was a grant being made available to different municipalities through their legislators. And subsequently, to, to getting that phone call a resident, I'm not sure who called or gave it worth my attention. But at Taff School, they always had blinking lights, yellow blinking lights as you're heading north, and then there's one as you were heading south. Well, the one as you were heading north on Tonne, it, I guess, it was described that the pole deteriorated, it fell, and it wasn't worth repairing, and, and they got rid of it. So that northbound side of Taff was not, it was not replaced. So with that, we're going to apply for this four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollar grant and hopefully get the money so we can replace that signal. And with the newer technology, I'm going to hopefully assume it'll be solar, and we won't have to pay four dollars a month for utilities for a blinking light. So that's in form of a resolution, have a motion, please?
Any motion?
Donna on the motion? Steve on the second? Any other questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is a resolution to authorize the employment of Megan Schipmacher as a part-time village deputy clerk with a twenty-hour work week beginning on July twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, at an hourly rate of twenty-one dollars. Following a three-month review, the hourly rate will be increased to twenty-three dollars. You have a motion, please? Donna on the motion, Vernon on the second, any other questions, comments?
I just want the audience, Tom, to know, we're not spending money we don't have. Two people have quit working at Village Hall that had already been budgeted their salary. The salary for this person will be less than those two salaries.
And I think we explained over the last couple of months that after experiencing those two employees who resigned, Christine would basically buy herself besides Joan, who handles the front desk responsibility. So to say that, you know, she was bearing the shoulders of like three or four people, because that's where we were staffed years ago, back in early in the two thousands and in the nineties, we had at least four or five people. And, and the biggest thing we need to do is have somebody who's trained and backed up in the clerk duties, you know, so, you know, whenever Christine decides to retire or, you know, just to have somebody that she can lean on to help with her day-to-day activities. Okay. Let's see, we have that in form of a motion and a second. Any other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next is a resolution for a special permit to be issued by the Village Washingtonville to the Roadies Rolling Bar LLC for the sale or services of alcohol beverages at the Village Fireworks to be held on Friday, July seventh, at L Vernon Park. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
You have second? Second on Vernon? Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next is a resolution, schedule a public hearing to be held on Monday, August seventh, at seven PM to consider a local law to amend Chapter twenty-six, Article four procurement policy. Have a motion, please? Motion Vernon, second? Steve, any questions, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Motion to authorize budget transfers amendments as necessary to effect necessary transfers of funds and to pay warrants. Motion, please?
Motion.
Okay. Susan? One second. Steve, any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Okay, next is open again to public comment if anyone has anything they'd like to bring to the floor.
Did the bill get approval for that loan, four and a half million, from the state? Or is that?
Yeah, we're going to, actually, we'll do a financial presentation at our next meeting. But basically, where we are with that is the court, the bills have been approved at the Assembly side and the Senate side. The governor has not signed it yet, and they have not delivered it. It sounds like there's a step process where the senior senators and senior assembly people have everything that's been passed, and then they pass it up the line for the governor to sign, and that hasn't happened yet. So we've been in touch with the senator's office, they've kind of taken the lead in this one. And we will let you know, you know, what we're, when, when that happens for sure, that we've been approved to spend up to that. We're also meeting again with our bond people, we have weekly meetings to discuss, you know, strategies of how much we need to borrow. Our, our real issue at the moment is that because there were no audits done, it's very difficult for us to have a real number. So we're still in the nineteen, nineteen? We're in the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty budget. We're trying to get that finalized, but there's still information that they're looking for. We're just having trouble finding it because everything was on paper. We also, as we indicated, I guess, last month, that we did hire a second firm, and they are going to be doing the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And we're kind of trying to work kind of backwards at this moment so we can get a better idea of where we are financially. Treasure is working on all the expenses that we've kind of accumulated to date and is working to give the department managers their budgets as accurate as they've been expending since April. So that hopefully will trend and give us an idea of what their monthly expenses are. We're still being tattooed by unpaid bills, we just received from an electrical contractor, supply house, fifteen thousand dollars for invoices that have been opened since twenty twenty-one. So it's those kind of things that are really, you know, hurting us at the end of the day. So we're trying to, you know, our treasurer is doing everything she can possible, but the biggest issue is that QuickBooks was only really utilized to print checks. There was no bookkeeping applied to that application. And I think we mentioned at the last meeting, like the, you know, the four point four, over the last four years, the budget ran into deficit between four hundred and five hundred thousand dollars over the last four years.
Every year.
Every year. And that is un-audited, those are the numbers that we're coming up with. That's the two million, right? Just to simply say, that's two million dollars. And then the one point six that, the checks that were written by the mayor between the election and us taking office, that, you know, is in the neighborhood of one point six, one point seven. So it's, and of course, we have all the debt debt, it needs to be paid as well. But we'll have that on a PowerPoint at our next meeting and, you know, describe that, describe that information. And again, when you hear something from the state, we'll definitely let everyone know where we are.
On the plus side, the wind generator should be going away in the next thirty to sixty days.
Yeah, well, I think we mentioned that, but the generator at the sewer plant, for whatever reason, they brought in a rental in twenty eighteen, and it's been there ever since at a tone or a tune. and it's been there ever since, at a tone or a tune between five thousand and fifty-five hundred dollars a month. So we've paid, I think, a total of three hundred thousand dollars for a rental.
That wasn't needed.
That really wasn't needed. And the worst part is I tried to get that money back from the state, but because when you do a big project like that, when you need to start paying it, they come in with bands. Those are those five-year small increments of when you're borrowing the money. And then when your project is pretty much complete, the financing people take these bands and they convert them into long-term bonds. Once it's in a long-term bond, you can't change anything. So we're finding lots of discrepancies and issues with the current plan. We're working with the, our contractor consultant to give us basically the capital list of things that weren't finished on the new plant as well as giving us information and things that need to be done on the old plant because this construction wasn't brand-new across the board for everything. The old plant is still operating with the assistance of the new portion of the plant. So, and I believe that bond runs until twenty fifty, and we pay about four hundred and eleven thousand a year total. We pay twenty-one thousand for administration fees. We pay eighty-something thousand in interest. And the balance of that is the principal of the loan itself.
Yeah, the principal's like three hundred and forty-four, and everything else is?
And it pretty much stays at that number for almost eight to ten years, and then the number starts to drop.
Interest and fees.
Yeah, the total starts to drop. So.
Lot of money.
It's a lot of money. Any other questions, comments from anyone? Department heads, anybody? Brian, Chris? You guys are good?
I just want to make the audience know that this is water meter reading season. If you see them, make sure that your dogs are secured so they can get into your yards if they need to, and to, you know, pay attention because they will be out there reading.
Anything else on board? Okay. Can I have a motion? We're going to be going into executive session for personal matters. No decisions will be made. We're not going to come out and vote. We're just going to come out and close the meeting, so. To have a motion to return to executive session?
A motion to move to executive session?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody, for coming.